Good evening, everyone. Sorry I'm late. Called everybody to sit here, but uh welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting for September 6th, 2022. At this time, I would like to get Commissioner Fleming to give us the invocation of the pledge. If everybody's standing.
Let's pray. In heaven's name we come once again in your name. And we would like to thank you for another blessing. Thank you for making our way out of nowhere. Thank you for being a provider. We pray that you bless us in thy, with thy county's will, business. Pray that you watch over and protect us, blessings one by one. We go by faithful responders, we go by parents, our friends and our neighbors. We would ask you out this day, this reaction, Jesus' name you put. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the religion of justice.
Before we get started, I'm gonna give Commissioner Stapleton a minute here to welcome this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would just like to take a moment to congratulate Mr. Mobley and also Mr. Purkis on their respective elections. In early November, they'll be taking over, and I just want to welcome them. I also want to say thank you to our staff today and Mr. Harris. We've been able to get some books fixed for them, and they're basically the same book that we have, gentlemen, so they can follow along in the next couple of months and try to help them get up to speed. And we'll have more discussion in the evening on a couple of things, but I just wanted to welcome them as well.
Welcome, y'all. Yes, please. Moving along, thanks Commissioner Stapleton for doing us. Moving on, item number one, approval of minutes for August 16th, 2022 regular board meeting, September 1st, 2022 construction plan review services tabulation meeting. Is there any discussion or a motion for approval?
Chair, I'll motion approve.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming. Second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor of I? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there anything? Be the pull for consent. This time, we'll move along with consent agenda, items 239. It's to have a motion to approve is very good discussion. Motion by Commissioner Land. Second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor of I? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to welcome the future farmers of America to their presentation. Welcome to the podium.
Hello.
Good evening. My name's Maddie Clark.
My name's Brett Harris.
I'm Lynn Slank.
And we are the chapter presidents of Swanee seniors, Swanee juniors, and Swanee middle. Our advisors are there in the back, Mr. and Mrs. Coleman and Mrs. Smith. And we would like to thank y'all for sending out the help to clean up our chapter's land lab and getting the grass cut in our pastures in order for preparations for our annual fall roundup.
God's assistance to clean up our land lab has not gone unnoticed. With our annual fall roundup, a cake auction right around the corner, y'all's assistance has held preparation tremendously.
And on behalf of y'all's help, we would like to invite y'all to our fall roundup on September 20th at 6:30 at our land lab.
Thank you for your continued support, and we look forward to seeing you at our annual fall roundup. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. I believe I heard someone say the sheriff's gonna buy three cakes this year.
I'm gonna bid on about five or six, I don't know if you're gonna buy it.
I'm gonna show up just to be the gifts.
You got one way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for uh, Mr. Harris asked me about getting that done through the FFA, and I appreciate the staff and y'all taking care of that, so it's nice. Glad we could help out. At this time, we move on to top specific items. At 505 or soon thereafter, as a matter to be heard, over public hearing, discuss a possible board action adoption of a final rate resolution for fire protection assessment for fiscal year 2022 through 23. Mr. Harris. Or y'all.
to why don't we do items 11 and 12 at the same time, would you stand to be sworn? Alrighty, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help you out? Thank you. As you approach the podium, please state your name and address clearly for the record. Thank you.
Not yet. Not yet.
Language for uh?
Mr. Harris, want to say what you know? The rates for fiscal year commens- uh fiscal year rates commencing October 1st?
Can you turn your mic on, please? Red means on there.
Okay, rates beginning October 1st, 2022 are for residential, $120 per dwelling unit. Non-residential, 12 cents per square foot. For property, less than 160 acres is 23.37. More than 160 acres is 22 cents per acre. Those are the proposed rates.
Which is unchanged, correct?
Correct.
Any questions, the staff, please? At this time, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? If we're in the voting. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there any further vote, board discussion? If not, any other motion to adopt? Motion? Motion? The, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor of I? All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number 12, at 505. I'm sorry. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. If y'all don't want to sit in the FFA, if y'all don't want to sit through all this, but if you just want to learn how you go to work, you open the stage, and if not, you're not gonna make any money. Thank y'all. Item number 12, at 505, or soon thereafter, as a matter to be heard, over public hearing, discuss a possible board action adoption of final rate resolution for solid waste for fiscal year 22 through 23. At this time, you already sworn in, everybody?
Does anybody change their mind in the meantime after the last one? Then I think we're good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the proposed rates, again, being unchanged, and begin October 1st, 2022, was $225 per dwelling unit.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions, the staff? Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? If we're in the voting.
I do.
Okay.
Thought he was gone.
Name of the address, please.
16586763, Live Oak Court, 3206. My question pertaining to the solid waste. I know we talked about this last year, and I thought I was getting on y'all. I know I was. What have we done to help our senior citizens and our veterans who can't afford where we're at now? What have we done to help our people?
Well, we did raise the rate again, so.
That's true. The thing is, is with COVID, and we've got this, everything that we have, gas, and any groceries, we've got people that are starving now. What have we done to help our people?
Well, I don't, I don't know what you're hunting for there, but.
Well, what I'm getting at, alright. When I went to the tax clerk's office area, earned in my tags, I went and talked to the lady upstairs, and there's a lot of people that's in trillions, and the county does help pay for some of these folks. There's gonna be a whole lot more people that could lose their homes, with also living increase, the gas, the decent, the groceries might go to them. We did have a sludge water, if I recollect, last year. Are we gonna be able to use some of that money to help our people?
Well, we are already using a half million dollars out of general revenue now to finance the garbage.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I did offer you guys last year to help raise some of these rates to help our people. And that was a lot.
Well, we're, trust me, they spent a lot, done on the garbage, and it's still going on. Still looking at several of the avenues, all wasted over the garbage, and the stickers that everybody had to endure is part of that process as well, as far as reducing the tonnage, to try to keep the rate from going up, or trying to not to, to add that on to the base of the taxpayer anymore. So, those are just some of the things that's, that's happened. If any of you other guys would like to speak at all.
Mr. Chairman, I just, just a brief comment. You actually did the same thing last year. You bought it down, half a million dollars last year, it's proposed in the budget for next year, and you bought it down by 500,000. And there's endышment relief program that's been in place for years, actually. So, there are qualifications in place for that, if anyone is interested in that program.
I just want to make sure our people are being served.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the chair bringing it up, but I'm going to place that there are certain things for veterans out there, for tax relief, and they have made sure, folks may have it.
We'll reach out to tax clerk. At this time, I'd like to close, uh, I guess we're moving. Glad you looked, motion killed off? Motion by Commissioner Fleming. Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor of I? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I'll close public hearing. Is there any commissioner items at this time? Any county attorney items at this time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to general business, item 13, discuss the possible board action, final plat approval of replat of lots 26 and 27, Antler subdivision, which means?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, board members, what you have before you is a, is a final plat approval for the replat of lots 26 and 27 of the Antlers subdivision. Because it is simply a replat of two existing lots, we treat it in the same process as we do for minor subdivisions, in that the board only gives one approval. So you have a MIR plat that the board so chooses to approve this replat request, Chairman would sign off on tonight. The Antler subdivision was originally approved by the Board of County Commissioners in July of 1993. The property in question is located in an ESA 2 zoning district and located within the 100-year flood lane. So the minimum lot size requirement on these lots is 10 acres each. They were originally platted as 10-acre lots, the replat shows them remaining 10-acre lots. The configuration of the lot has changed a little bit. If you, if you see the plat that was supplied with your information, there is a dotted line that kind of shows what the old dimension used to be, and that the lots were situated more in a north-south fashion. The owner of the property has indicated that the lot that's gonna go around, if you, if you think about where this property is situated, it's located east of River Road and in and around Shady Grove Baptist Church. So the property owner has indicated that one of those lots that would be around Shady Grove Baptist Church would be utilized by the church for future expansion of their cemetery as well as using the property for their annual event, which is a old-timey day. So they have a use for the property. Property will remain in compliance based on the lot size requirement being in that environmentally sensitive zoning district. Plat was reviewed and found to be in compliance with Chapter 177 Florida statutes, and the title opinion that was submitted with the plat review was also been part of your packet and has been moved by the county attorney. I don't have anything to add at this time. I would enter a file into the record, and just, just so you know that if the board did choose that, I believe Logan has a copy of the MIR plat and the chairman signed off on it.
At this time, we'll take in the file as composite exhibit number one.
Is there any questions, which means? Seeing none, uh, motion by Commissioner Stapleton. Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor of I? All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item number 14, discuss the possible board action adoption of infrastructure capital improvement plan, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, there's been some discussion of adopting, formally adopting a capital improvement plan associated with the infrastructure, particularly those plans that we have for the grant funding that was already made application for, various entities that we've had conversations with that suggested we go ahead and adopt this. I had a conversation with Mr. Meeks about this pertaining to our capital, I mean, our comprehensive land use plan. And we may bring this back for potential comp plan amendment, but for now, so that it's in the record, I'm asking the board to go ahead and adopt this. These are improvements that all of us have talked about. I'll go ahead and just read through them real quick. You've got the water infrastructure improvements for the Catalas site, sewer infrastructure improvements for the Catalas site, 68th Terrace Road reconstruction, and then the lift station and forest name for 68th Terrace Sewer. US 129 North of I-10, water and sewer, 164th Street Bridge replacement, 184th Road construction, County Road 137 reconstruction, County Road 250 reconstruction, phases one and two, County Road 49 reconstruction. Obviously, that would be a phase, and we're not sure what that phase is gonna look like yet, depending on whatever funding we eventually get for the portion that's going to be done sooner. But I feel like there's a good chance that because of the way that funding is going right now, that we're gonna end up with another, maybe a third phase of that project. These are not in any particular order, I'll point that out, because item number six here, that project's been rocking on forever and has never been funded. I don't know if or when it's gonna be funded, but it's on the list, on the list. So let me just emphasize that it doesn't have particular order, if this is our ranking, it'll be similar to you. I'm just asking the board to go ahead and adopt this, and then we may bring the same list back to you for a comp plan amendment, text command, if this is later.
Question on the completion dates, and that being a capital improvement plan, if you don't, if you don't get these done.
We'll just amend the dates later.
You can amend the rest, rest of the ones.
Right, because in fact, you'll notice some of these need to be done in the next year and a half.
Right.
But we're gonna just use the standard five-year, because I think that's what the comp plan would call for, if we had selected a comp plan. But some of these I would hope we get accomplished, folks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other questions, Mr. Harris? Mr. Harris?
Um, Mr. Harris, is, does the, the completion of the backsides of sports flats not qualify for an infrastructure capital improvement?
No, sir. No, I anticipate it's coming back, because Mr. Scott's got a list that's up in this book.
Kind of like Sheriff's?
Right.
He can, Sheriff, kind of have same type of list.
But we just need to bring that back, honestly, I mean, and, and I know that there are lots of things, the parks and recreation that we've talked about doing, and we just need to bring those back as a separate list. The purpose of this, though, with all the grant applications that we have in today, and some of the conversations that particularly the chairman and I've had with some of these entities that we're talking to, that suggested we try to get these in a capital improvement plan. In fact, I'm pretty sure that maybe one of these has been in a capital improvement plan previously, and that was some of the water and sewer, but I think we're going to have a list that we can send out with the minutes of the meeting if we're asked to.
Um, this particular plan, I mean, we can amend, I heard you say we can amend the dates, but we could amend something else were to arise based on unforeseen need somewhere, and we can amend this easily.
Absolutely, that's correct. If you put it in the comp plan, it's a little more time-consuming to amend, but even then, it can be amended. If we're doing right now, if we, we had a phone call tomorrow, and for the next day, and they want a copy of our capital improvement plan that's been adopted by the board, we can send this with a copy of minutes.
Yep. Anybody else? Do I have a motion to approve? Permission, Mr. Chairman. Second, permission by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor of I? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 15, discuss the possible board action order bid for reconstruction of 68th Terrace, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we received three bids, had the review by our engineer, and it appears that the lowest qualified bid for this project is Anderson, Columbia, at an amount of $260,554.87. So I'm just asking for the board to award the project and authorize us to agree.
Mr. Chairman, I don't recall, but I know we've been asked to do this. What did we budget for that? I know we had a new budget.
Um, we put 300 in there, but it's because I wasn't sure that we'd get bids back this time of year, and it might take longer, we might have to bid it twice. Thankfully, we were able to get bids. The closer we get in the holidays, the more difficult it becomes to get bids in on a lot of projects. So the 300 was the purpose of us coming back the second time and trying to bid, and we did.
So we're good on the funding, we don't have to find any of the 300 we allocated in this?
No, we just postponed the Gipsoil project we're doing for down there. We've got a plan. No, I think we're okay. In fact, the 300, I think we sent the nudes of both of y'all. Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about. Right, no, we're gonna be fine.
Any other questions?
I'm just saying, you guys see the other one there? I did speak to the owner, that kind of, he's okay with some garbage in there. We didn't, I won't say he didn't understand it, but it's, it's okay with the public members. We're taking a priority, we're just looking to find a way to get qualified, what you can really process away.
Any others? Motion by Commissioner Hale. Which one?
No, that was his, he got it. Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor of I? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any additional agenda items? Public concerns, public concerns, no. Is anybody wishing to speak? I'll get you, Mr. Norris. Anybody wishing to speak, you want to go to the podium, or paper, or watch, or drive? At this time, I'd like to get Mr. Norris to add some comments, he called me.
Mr. Chairman, while he comes to the podium, I'll add a comment. You strolled in here a little bit late, but you set the record right here until you run this guy up. We're chilling.
Well, Mr. Harris called and said, didn't say it needed a report done, so I put it all together, so.
I worked it.
You can, you can wait till the middle of him over there.
I only gave you 30 minutes this time.
Yeah. And Commissioner Layton, you may want to jump in on this, I just know we've been pushing this, you know, the broadband piece, and Shannon's been working his, working hard, and so has the committee, and I just wanted to give a little bit of a update, so I don't know if you, if you wanted to, a little bit about the last meeting, or if you.
Go ahead, you're good at that.
Basically, the LPTT committee met on 8/25. Good meeting, a lot of good stuff. Again, we're committed 100%, and it was some great discussion, and I think that you can attest to that, and so can, so can Shannon. He did have to cut out, and he had opportunity to go meet with the state of Florida and discuss with them how they should be writing up the rules and regs for rural broadband, and I think they were accommodating, or not. But, so he's, he's working real hard. I guess the point of this is just that I know we're working real hard, and it's very important. And I know everyone saw the little postcards, I think I had those at previous meeting. Still, you can take the speed test, all you gotta do is click on the back of this card. I want to let you know that we have distributed, distributed these cards to all the schools, Bradford, all the schools here uptown, as well as private schools. And, who was over at Finance, actually, everybody should have got one of these in there, in their paycheck, you know, as, as a result, so we appreciate them stepping up and doing that. The city library also helped us in all of their bills, they put a statement in there, we prepared to take the speed test. And probably the big boost was Swanee Valley Electric themselves sent out an email, and most of you probably got that email saying, please take the speed test. That was very important, very important to, as we all know, because what the federal government says we have and what we say we have are two different anniversars. So I just wanted to mention that. Also, our NFEDP organization, we had a call last week, the executive board, and this information was brought up, and it became known, Swanee was fighting real hard for rural broadband, and so we're gonna be at that meetings this Friday, we'll be at that meeting, obviously, and they heard about Mr. Roberts, he left such a lasting impression on state of Florida, we got him coming with us this week, he's gonna come over and give a big speech about what all the rest of the rural counties will be doing, so it's a pretty big deal. But I wanted to let you guys know that all this hard work is paying off. When we first started, a little over a month ago, we were at 2.59%, when I started tracking it on the maps, we were at 2.59%. As of right now, the goal is 10% participation for all the rural counties. As of right now, there are seven counties that are over the 10% threshold in the whole state of Florida, and these guidelines were set up by the state of Florida, it was the 10%. And I would like to let you know that Swanee County is at 14.56%, and currently rated the highest ranking county in the state of Florida in participation rate. So we went from the bottom of the list to the top of the list, we're currently number one in participation. So I want to thank you and all of you folks for taking that test, it's gonna be really important, and with, with what we're doing, we're taking it very serious, and I think this is gonna help expedite some of the processes, and hopefully in the next couple of years, we'll all have availability of gigabyte speeds, even if you live three miles down the road.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thanks for everybody taking that test, it's really important, appreciate each other. Thank you. At this time, we will, Mr. Westburn, if you have any comments?
I do. First of all, and those of you who were there last week when the governor came and we received the check, you were there when I said I really appreciated Swanee Valley Electric stepping up, and she was that meeting room, that was much needed on short notice, and I made a call out there, and they scrambled and made that available, and I just really appreciate what they did. But I want to point out a few. for just over two point three million for AOC. Uh, and then we had worked out the million dollars the other day on the local assistance grant. So that's over ten million dollars. And we've got a long ways to go, trust me. We've got a long way. In fact, that's part of Mr. Roberts dying plan. Every time he comes in, we've got another one. He recognizes how much work is coming and he loses a few more notches on his belt. But uh, in any event, we've still got a long ways to go. The uh infrastructure of the catalyst site is still a big ticket item. I mean, we've got some grant applications in well over six million dollars. Um, and some of those grants are getting more complicated now. They're gonna require a lot of input. Um, I've spoken to Mr. Norris about that. We've got a lot of input, participation from some of the companies out there, but we have been on a roll um this year and I'm hoping before the end of the calendar year that we have even more good news. Uh, we're still working. For those of you that are aware, we're still working uh waiting for a response back from the uh state revolving fund to help with balance of the money that we need for the water lines out there. The plan right now is to attack that uh water line extension first because companies will need fire flow. Um, we're sorting through the details of that, hoping we have all the funding and pressure back really quick. That's what I hope.
Thank you, sir. Reba?
I don't have anything, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Fleming?
Still, I have much. I'd just like to echo what Commissioner, thank you for saying earlier. Congratulations. I don't want to start that name calling um, Mr. uh.
Mobley.
Mobley. Well, I just recently, I don't want to get in the mess. That uh, I, I just, I, you know, I know some Mobleys, but uh congratulations to you and uh enjoy seeing you at the funeral memorial services the other day. And uh to Mr. Perkins, uh, but he gonna be my commissioner sometime and uh, and then Commissioner Layton's gonna be my commissioner. I have two commissioners. So I've been knowing Mr. Perkins all my life. Matter of fact, a family member. Very, very good young man. And I, I, you see how you're conducting business. I feel in my heart that, that it is continuation and it will continue in, in this fashion. We, we've come a long way since I've been on this board. We've come a long way. I'm not gonna say we've come from nothing, but we've come a long way from, from the way things have been handled, but I have grown and developed. But we thank you each and every, and the guys I've worked with. I'm kind of a crowd baby too. I tear up a little bit.
Emotion.
But uh it's from the heart because I love people. I, I, it's from the heart. It's love and faith. It's, it's straight from the heart. It's true and that's all.
Well, no, it's funny.
You should have let me do that beforehand. That's got a hard following. I'd just like to follow up where we started the meeting. Uh, when I congratulated Mr. Mobley and Mr. Perkins, you both have absolutely done a wonderful job for this county. Uh, just so folks know, at, at the end of the day, all we guys are caring. But I called this problem. I congratulated him. I told him the governor was coming to town. And I told him to get his sports coat. He's coming as my guest. And that's what we did. Now, I will say this. We walked into a crowded room and we got a few looks at the screen. Those folks around these parts hadn't seen nothing quite like that before. But uh, I uh, we've had good conversations. There's already had some issues we've had to deal with, with, with some folks that are, that have issues and uh.
What'd he guess? Was it right?
Happens to do it right. But uh, we're having some, some good conversation with that. My goal with, with both of these gentlemen is, is to get them up to speed. I think our office, uh, like I said before, we have their information. They're gonna be here with us on this front row and, and stay right in touch with what we're doing to kind of get them up to speed. My, I, I told Mr. Mobley, I said, I want to give you a crash course in two months. That it takes a year to learn. And whatever I can do, this is about Swan County. It's not about any more person.
Yeah.
So we're gonna continue to work together and, and I'm gonna do everything I can to make him successful. I'll, I'll disclose with this. One of our conversations I had with him, I said, I want you to be so successful that me and my family vote for you.
That's a nice good point. Mr. Lane?
Uh, we have a, that side of this is pretty strong.
Yeah, I had a record meeting.
A couple of things before I forget. The fall roundup at FFA, they passed out little cards. That's a really good event. It helps the kids. They do a cake auction. They beach supper uh September twentieth at six thirty B M at the Donbelle Land Lab, which is out by the Douglas Fair. Like most people know where that's at, but that's a really good function. It helps one way to get back to the community. Um, and then I follow up with what the left side say over there. Uh, I had to commend Commissioner Stapleton. I walked in here today, one of the first uh ten people here and him and Mr. Mobley were sitting over there going through the book. Um, and, and he did, he, he invited him to the governor's thing as incoming commissioner and had told us all why he had done it. And I mean, that's first class folks. That's, that's uh, you know, like, like he said, it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's not what you accumulate on a service. It's the people touching how you did it.
I shared through this way.
Yeah, since you mentioned the uh, the lab, I mean, the FFA, y'all come and you're the best chicken, uh, chicken right here in hand.
You weren't being good.
But anyhow, I mean, hats off to Commissioner Stapleton and congrats to Mr. Mobley and Mr. Perkins. Y'all, you know, glad to see y'all come and get committed and sort of get the ground running. You know, I know two guys on the other end down there make sure that their own books are out. So that's all I got.
I just brought on the heels of that. I've known these two folks here, fine folks for a long time, with families and we uh ain't gonna lose these two up here, but we're glad to have you two before we work anybody else. But it's, I think Commissioner Stapleton said you guys, maybe that, that first year, almost two years, just trying to beat your feet and get understanding all the ins and outs and things that goes on. It's a lot you don't realize. So congratulations to you guys. I'm gonna shake the left up and just a little bit. Good notice.
Yeah.
How about that?
Yes, sir.
But other than that, I just think, and I might always say this, we read on the what tomorrow holds. Uh, folks always pray for the neighbors.
Pray for yourself, pray for this world.
Yeah.
Pray for us and for the communities. For sure. Thank you guys.
Thank you, sir. Well, congratulations to both of you. Glad to have you. First class, Mr. Stapleton, helping them. I'm gonna thank me and Mr. Lan. You had a good, didn't you?
I got a dog on our head. Here you go.
Yeah, I'm gonna throw you in here and said, all right, boys, figure it out. So that's kind of what we did and I was still doing it a lot. Uh, and then uh, then they decided I need to be chairman right one year in and uh, that's uh, that's something to do too, I can tell you. Glad to have both of you. Glad to have both of y'all. Appreciate what y'all have done and uh just uh thank you everybody for coming, participating. We enjoy it. Glad to have all of you and wish more of you a good, just need to figure this out. Love you. Appreciate all of you coming. With that, I'll just close it up.
I didn't know that because I haven't seen what Gary Walder did like that. I didn't know if he had any good news or any news to share.
Sorry?
It's been Gary Walder. Yeah.
I was trying to lay low tonight.
No, I just happened to see you right there.
I'll, I'll, I'll be at the spring debrief so that I can get out of record time. Just a few things. I want to thank the county and all for the repairs they've made to our facility out there inside and externally. A new roof and the paint's going great. Thanks to them. Awesome job. Uh, so we do, certainly appreciate that. We've been very, very busy with outreach activities and initiatives, partnered with IFAS uh to do some blood pressure chronic disease work. We've got some classes set up at the libraries in Bradford. Live could be working on Dallin Park, so we'll be able to teach some series of classes about blood pressure, how to manage your blood pressure, um proper foods to eat and cook and so forth. So really excited about that. We're working on a diabetes program that we hope to take out as well to start teaching classes there. Um, we are, excuse me, our COVID cases are decreasing and that's all I want to say about that.
Good.
And uh, and the, the final thing is uh we've had established three food pantries, one in Bradford at the, by town hall, one at the health department, where our food insecurities and trying to get it to those folks that might be limited in transportation wise. Uh, but we also have got one established over in Fayette County, the daycare next to the school. So the community has been very, very gracious to help us support, keep them food to, and make it very accessible for those folks. So uh, that's my report. I just, I want to appreciate y'all, the attention y'all have been giving, the health department and the repairs and all that are being made. It's a, very, very much appreciate.
One thing before you leave, I know I keep asking you, but have you hired anybody yet?
We're trying.
Still looking.
Uh, it's, it's been a very frustrating effort with folks not wanting to work and trying to find those minimum qualifications, especially in our environmental departments. So we're about on the tenth round of advertising and, and uh, sad to say we're not being on the county that's facing issues.
Thank you. I know a lot of people get upset because of permit don't come through just when they think it work too. And he's a, he's a lot of short-staffed around there, so I just want everybody to realize that and uh, they do, they do the best they can with what they're working with right now. I know getting other help from other counties, I believe, you know, that would, so this won't like.
And I appreciate that very much. Also, we're seeing an increase in the amount of permit traffic coming through. This is gonna be a better year for Swan County. That means we're growing. It's uh, our, our activity has increased and our, our staff is strong.
I don't know what it is.
Do appreciate the patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Appreciate Kerry introducing us to the normal qualifications.
With us now also is Stacy Griffith. She's one of the council, council, council pursuers towards town Bradford, but uh she wasn't noticed. So we recognize her.
Does she want to come up and speak?
I think you.
No, don't.
But Greg, before you leave, I want to thank you and I'm sure the town of Bradford wants to thank you and I especially want to thank you for putting in the time and effort, you and your staff, for uh, I mean, it's the best way to say this, getting Bradford and, and the county back, the county back in the parks program in Bradford and uh looking forward to a lot of success there. I appreciate all of your hard help getting that done.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate our staff, what, what, what we're be doing and, and uh, what we're gonna support. But uh, it's all about Swan County.
You mean, thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Good job.
Eddie, you got anything you want to add? Anybody else?
I'd like to congratulate both of y'all on the class acts that both of y'all are. And your, my respect for you, Mr. Flynn, is rose financially by the way you treated him and brought him to that meeting with the governor. Good job. And we're gonna be sorry to see you go.
I'm still around. I'm still here.
Uh, I want to thank the governor too for, for coming and, and giving us the money that we so desperately need for the catalyst site. So I just want, I know he probably don't have time to watch YouTube on our meeting, but anyhow, if he does, I just want to say thank you, Governor. With that, I just need a motion.
What motion is?
Motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lan, all in favor, I. All opposed, same side. Thank y'all.